Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Beaver Creek City Council Chamber. Before we start this evening, I have a couple proclamations I'd like to present. And so if I can ask our Parks Director to come forward, Ms. Farrell? We've recently created a... What's the name of our committee?
The...
Tree Advisory Board.
Tree Advisory Board. And so alongside of that creation, I want to do a proclamation for Arbor Day.
Fantastic.
So I will read this, please. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas, trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas, trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood, for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas, trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, beautify our community, and wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, I Bob Stone, Mayor of the City of Beaver Creek, Ohio, along with the entire City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2018, and specifically April 27, as Arbor Day, in the City of Beaver Creek, and urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, and encourage all citizens to plant trees, to gladden the heart, and promote the well-being of this and future generations. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it.
And I have one more. And if I can invite Ann and David Challen, please come forward. You've got your agenda. All right. I might have to cheat on it just a little bit once in a while. All right, well, we have another proclamation today, and this is Older Americans Month. And so with that said, whereas each May, Ohio and the nation celebrate Older Americans Month as a time to honor our elders for their legacies and for their contributions to our nation. And whereas, the senior adults in Beaver Creek are among our most treasured resources, united by historical experiences, strengthened by diversity, and interpreting events through varied perspectives and backgrounds to bring wisdom and insight to our community. And whereas, our senior adults have proven to be energetic and involve citizens in our community, taking charge of their health and utilizing the resources to continue an active lifestyle. Whereas, our senior adults are valuable members of society who enhance the Beaver Creek community as well as our personal lives. And whereas, our senior adults should be recognized and honored as well as the professionals, family members, and volunteers who care for and worked with many of them. Now therefore, I Bob Stone, Mayor of the City of Beaver Creek, Ohio, along with the entire City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2018 as Older Americans Month, here in the City of Beaver Creek, and salute and honor all Beaver Creek senior adults for enhancing and contributing to the quality of life in Beaver Creek. And I'd like to present that to you. And thank you very much. Do you have any comments you'd like to make? You have the agenda. You might have something to say.
We accept with pleasure, and it's a good proclamation.
All right, well, thank you. And I'm proud to be part of the club. Thank you very much. Okay, so if we can call this meeting to order, please, may we have a roll call?
Councilmember Kern.
Here.
Councilmember Littrell.
Here.
Councilmember Rushing.
Here.
Councilmember Upton.
Here.
Councilmember Van.
Here.
Vice Mayor Garcia.
Here.
Mayor Stone.
Here. At this point, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Vice Mayor Garcia for the pledge.
Good evening. If you could all please stand, and I don't believe we have any scouts, so I will lead us in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And if you could all remain standing for a moment, please. Lord, we pray that you guide us in our deliberations during this meeting, so that way we may conduct ourselves and perform our duties in direct accordance with the principal laws of our city, state, and country. We beseech your blessing so that we may always work in the best interest of our residents and our city. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have an agenda before us this evening. Any changes?
Seeing none, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of the minutes from the March 26, 2018 regular meeting. Any changes or corrections?
Mr. Mayor, if there's no comments, I'd move for approval of the minutes from the March 26 regular meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes for the March 26, 2018 regular meeting as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? One abstention, right here. I didn't know where I was that time, that day, quite honestly. Next item on the agenda, public hearing, PUD 18-1.
This is an application filed by Mills Barnett Pavilion, 3500 Pentagon Boulevard, Suite 500, Beaver Creek, Ohio, 45431. The application requests approval to rezone approximately 3.5 acres from R-1A, one family residential district, to MXPUD, mixed plan unit development. The property is located at 1505 North Fairfield Road, further described as Book 4, Page 5, Parcel 126 on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Thank you. Is there an applicant or an applicant's representative that would like to address council on this application? Please come forward and give us a name and address.
Good evening. My name is John Kopplecheck with Mills Development. That's 3500 Pentagon Boulevard, Suite 500, Beaver Creek, 45431. We are the group that bought the former Lehman property, roughly 3.5 acres, corner of North Fairfield and Lance, here today to ask for approval, or to begin the process of asking for approval, to rezone to an MXPUD. Our goal for the project is a mixed-use commercial development, anticipated uses ranging from office, medical office, retail, and maybe some residential. That really fits in line with the city's outline of their land use plan. It designate that area as the community commercial office area. Hopefully, we're going to be underway here yet in 2018, and really excited at another opportunity for us to invest in the City of Beaver Creek and really looking forward to another successful project. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Staff has a report, I see.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. The case you have before you is PUD 18-1. The applicant's requesting approval to rezone three and a half acres from R1A, single-family residential, to a mixed-use plan unit development in order to construct a mix of different uses. Projects located in central Beaver Creek, just north of the intersection of North Fairfield Road and Dayton Xenia's to the northwest. This is a closer aerial photo of that. It's located at 1505 North Fairfield Road. And the property has two frontages, one on Lance Road, about 170 feet of frontage on the most recent extension on Lance Road, and then about 140 feet of frontage on North Fairfield Road. There's also an existing 1,950 square foot house and several outbuildings throughout the site. I've highlighted the three and a half acres for your consideration this evening in yellow. And because the last year, or early last year, actually earlier this year, recently there was another PUD that was rezoned just to the south of this, the Rock Drive PUD, and it hasn't been reflected on the map yet, so I wanted to at least show that this area is abutting that recently rezoned PUD. Also, one of the same typical type of uses that we're proposing here this evening. This is the three and a half acres highlighted on the land use plan. It's designated as office in the land use plan, but it does border on community commercial and single-family residential, as well as residential office, so it is a transitional area between the lower density residential areas to the north and the commercial density, medium-density commercial to the south, and office in the future to the south of that. A few selected conditions in your ordinance for your consideration. One is that the uses include single-family residential, two-family residential, and multifamily residential. And we've also included a list of B2 uses, and then in the ordinance excludes a few uses from that B2 uses. There's also a proposed 40-foot building setback from the north of the property line because of the residential, as well as to the west of the property line. And then we also added a 20-foot parking lot to the north, I'm sorry, to the north property line and the western property line. And that, that's the very similar building and parking lot setbacks that we have at Wright Pack Credit Union, which is across the street, across North Fairfield Road, that also abuts residential properties. Another condition is we're proposing that the maximum dwelling units for any residential would be five and a half to 20 units per acre, which is aligned with medium-density residential. Now, the applicant's intending to not do fully residential, it just allows for use in addition to the commercial uses and office uses that they're proposing. So it's not intended for a solid residential use, it's just if they do residential, we'll make sure that they follow. There is some density guidelines. Also, and there's a condition that, you know, before they go to a specific site plan approval, they're not allowed to go out and remove trees on the PUD. As you noticed, the property to the south, there's been some tree removal, and we want to make sure that before that happens, before we go to a specific site plan, that we take a good look at, you know, what we can do to save as many trees as we can out there from a logical matter. There are eight conditions in your proposed ordinance for your consideration this evening. Both Planning Commission and staff do recommend approval of the applicant's request, and I'm here to answer any questions following the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is the public input. Is there anyone here this evening? Is there anyone here this evening that would like to address council on this application? If so, please come forward, give us your name and address. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes, or get one or two other people to donate their three minutes to you.
Hi, my name's Henry Wallbeck. I'm at 3424 Dayton Xenia Road in Beaver Creek, and we are the, what I think some of the planner or city engineer calls the large lot to the west. Is that correct, Randy? Yeah. Actually, no, keep, yeah, that one, yeah. So we share, our part of the property shares about a 351-foot property line there between Lehman's and our place. And we also share an additional property line at the other development on Rock Drive. So we're sharing, our property backs into that. And actually, Mayor Stone, I believe that you drove the bus back to my mom's place.
I did.
Do you remember that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's back the private lane. So the questions that I have, I wrote, prepared a list, and I actually gave them to Randy during the Planning Commission hearing. They're more technically oriented. Some issues about, well, not issues, but the typical requirements that we would expect to see in terms of buffering, landscape requirements, that kind of thing, setbacks, and I think Randy addressed those. There was, Randy, if you could go back to the, to the building and the parking setback slide, yeah, keep, one more. Go one more back. Okay, so we're seeing 40-foot building setback from north and west. Then the next one down should say 20-foot parking setback. You would not have the building in that. It's a typo. We don't want to confuse people. So that's the only thing I saw on this. And then on the application packet, I believe that there was a survey turned in. On the survey of the Lehman property, the civil engineer discovered some encroachments. And actually, Michael Self also brought up the, he thought there was an encroachment of the neighbor's barn into the Lehman property. Randy, could you scroll to that one? No, actually, actually, the aerial might do as well. He, yeah, yeah. On the aerial, you can actually see the green line, looks like it goes through the, through the neighbor's barn. That's actually an optical illusion, because the airplane is slightly out of, it's not directly above the property. So the barn is actually not encroaching on Lehman's property. There are some, what the surveyor calls wire fence encroachments, and actually, those were cattle fence that were probably dating back to the 1800s. And actually, during the tree damage years we've had with Hurricane Ike, that pushed the fences down. There is one other thing that was an encroachment that the surveyor thought, however, that's, there was an encroachment of a undocumented DPNL power line that runs diagonally through the property. And there is an easement for that. On the site plan, Randy, if you could scroll to the site plan. Next one, yeah, keep going. One more. There you go. I think it says encroachment notes, I think there are six of them. Yeah, there's a diagonal line that goes through there, and actually, there is an easement for that, for that power line. I checked with the DPNL, they provided documentation for that. So actually, that power line serves our place and then three other residences back there, back the private lane.
Well, three, three minutes flies by real quick, so I'm just, you're more than welcome to find somebody to donate some more time if you'd like to talk some more.
I understand. I'm a senior citizen, though.
You're part, you're...
And this is actually my, I'm a little off-topic here. Those are the only problems that I had with this, other than the fact that I share the same concerns that other people did during a Planning Commission meeting regarding bars and taverns. I believe that Michael Self made that a conditional use, so that you have the opportunity to review that again. I thought that was nice. And the other thing is the Weckler property on Rock Drive. That is on the developer's docket to either rezone that or leave it as R1A. It was, there are actually three parcels on Rock that have not been rezoned as of yet. So in my senior years, that's a little bit long, I apologize. I'm also in my 46-year...
(laughing).
I'm going to keep going here. I'm in my 46-year of practicing architecture, and I worked for a local Dayton firm, one of the older firms in town. And so I kind of know what these guys are doing. We kind of do the same thing, maybe a little bit different. We're doing, we do a lot of libraries and public schools and places of religious worship. So it's kind of not a new thing for me, with the exception that I'm one of the landowners that's next to this. So that's it for me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm guessing that a lot of the technical issues that you talk to staff about will be addressed in the site plan stage. All right, anyone else have anything they want to bring the council's attention on this application? Anyone else at all? Seeing none, we will close the public input, and we will go to council time. Council input. Councilman Kern, any comments you'd like to make?
What was the comment he made, just a clarification concerning bars?
Was there a conditional, I didn't get what he said there. Was it conditional use?
Yeah, and the recommended resolution for Planning Commission, they changed the bars and taverns to conditional use. I think there was concern about having a standalone bar in this area with the residential. We don't see that ever happening. If anything, if you look at a smaller-scale mixed-use development like this, it would be something that would be contained within a multi-purpose building, you know, maybe not typically standalone. That is not a conditional use in your most, or your ordinance this evening, but if you want to revisit that, but that was a recommendation by Planning Commission to have that as a conditional use. But talking to the applicant, we didn't think there would be, ever be a standalone bar or dance club like you would typically see, more of a local restaurant or a pub or something like that.
Okay. Anything else? That's it, thank you. All right, Councilman Upton.
Thank you, Mayor Stone. I guess just real quick, I want to thank the applicant for stepping up once again to invest in the community. You've been a great community partner in the past with some of the developments, and appreciate the interest and wanting to do more. I do see in our packet, there are eight items that were set for conditional, that are conditional and permitted in B2 zoning districts, brewery falling into that. So do we need to add a ninth if we wanted to consider bars and taverns?
Yeah, or you could just amend the exhibit to add that as a conditional use. You don't have to add a separate condition, it'd just be, make it conditional on motion and by acclamation or by vote, and then we could, we'll add it as conditional.
Okay, I wasn't sure if the brewery covered that.
Yeah, you know, by definition breweries are microbrew pubs, you know, I mean, it's, again, we're looking at two and a half acres here, so you're not going to have a Budweiser processing plant here or something, so. It's more of us, we want to be able to be creative on this project. We think it's a, it's a unique piece in combination with what's further to the south. And depending on what we see at the specific site plan, we didn't want to limit our options moving forward as to what may be the market for this development, and trying to make it more of a community-oriented destination as opposed to, we obviously know we have our regional draws on the north and south part of town, the green at the mall. What we're really looking for here is to move towards the process of having, even though it's a non-traditional, but a non-traditional downtown here that would be, serve people of Beaver Creek as opposed to drawing people from other locations. And given that, there's some local, some of those uses that were recommended to be conditional, we think could be critical in creating that kind of atmosphere that we want to work with the developer on.
Just for clarification, Mr. Upton, I think you're, are you looking at the ordinance?
I'm looking at Section 2.
Of the ordinance.
Of the ordinance.
Yeah, the, the conditional ones, those are, those are, the brewery is accepted. You have to go to Page 21, the list from the Planning Commission.
B2 zoning districts with the exception of the following.
Those are, yes, but there was, Planning Commission had it, Page 21, those are the conditional uses.
Steve, those were, those are not carried over into the ordinance?
No, I know they aren't, but, but when you, but Mr. Upton said, refer the brewery as conditional, it is not conditional. It's excluded.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's why I'm trying to make sure the points, you know, so it's understood that those are not conditional uses.
They're excluded. Excluded, yes. Just so we're correct.
That's all for me at the moment.
Okay, Councilmember Van.
This doesn't directly relate to this, but I learned this weekend that there are business establishments that are on the order of a booth coffee shop that people become members of because they work from their home, but they want to leave their home and work in a business environment. And so they go to this place that they are, have a, and they have a desk, and they can do their eight-to-five job there in private or have a conference. Do we have one of those here?
We do, I mean, we have a lot of those office...
It's different than Starbucks. It's different because, because it's meant for people to work there.
We don't have what you're talking about, but we do have places where...
We Works or something like that, it was called.
We do have places where you share a secretary, you have, the secretary's phone number will be different every time somebody calls in from a different company. We have some of that up at the Acropolis, and some of those throughout the community where you can rent an office space and run your business from there, but you share all the facilities that you, the conference room be shared and rented by multiple companies, secretary shared.
Yeah, this one, you didn't even have, you rented a membership, but...
Yeah, I understand.
You didn't have to use it every day. I thought it was a novel, it was a good way, because so many things are being done remotely now, that people don't have to have that space every day.
Sure. I mean, they're here to listen in, I mean, I'm sure they'd be interested in anybody that can...
Other than that, because I just thought it was a clever idea, and I think that since we're trying to promote different kinds of workers in Beaver Creek, it was a great idea. It doesn't directly relate to this.
Yeah, but I mean, if it doesn't work here, we'll keep open mind for any other locations.
I don't have, I, I look forward to, I would do the rezoning and look forward to seeing their site plan when it comes forward.
Councilmember Rushing.
No, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Upton asked my question. Thank you.
Very good. Councilmember Littrell.
Thank you, sir. Randy, I do have a question. So the last time I recall this coming before us, was, that was last year, correct? It was, was the first time it was rezoned?
No, this, you're thinking...
It was the property below. Right, it was below, but we had the same...
The Rock Drive development, yeah.
No, it was the one before that, the corner of North Fairfield and Lawson. And, yeah, right there, that corner lot that's vacant that has a sign on it that says for medical use.
I don't think, that hasn't been rezoned.
No, it hasn't yet, but my question is, is that when I spoke to Mr. McGrath about this, I know it was at least a year ago, and we talked about it, because with that empty lot, and trying to tie in here with the current PUD, with that current empty one, is there going to be a way, if something goes in there, that they can come out on that PUD? You know what I'm talking about, Mr. McGrath?
I know exactly what you're talking about.
Remember what we're, we had this conversation, if you could help me with that.
Again, we, we're talking about this combination of these two parcels here in terms of access.
I just want to make sure that future, we're looking at this one, but that somehow is going to tie, I just want to make sure, because right now, if you come off of Lawson, you cannot get out. And so whatever business goes there, it's going to be difficult, and you certainly can't go left, which is the way I'm talking, but somehow that needs to be, I just want to make sure that we talk about this before we move a little forward.
Yeah, and we, we're having these conversations actively as we speak. Now, obviously, these are two separate owners.
Yes, they are.
And this is going to be something that we'd have to look to see if it works for a cross-access easement here, but when we look at this site independently, you're right, I mean, it's going to be, it almost becomes prohibitive, because if they don't have a cross-connection, then they don't get access to the traffic light. Plus, if you put in any left-hand turn lanes, you're too close to that light right here to try to jump into that lane. And we don't necessarily want to see any traffic, other than maybe right out here coming in and off of a residential street. So there, this site, if you look at it independently, is limited on what can be done access-wise. Our goal would be to interconnect these properties, but again, that's something that would be negotiated by the private property owners, to what's in their best interest and...
And I know we don't have any impact on that, it's just that when you see that vacant lot, and then you see the one that we're looking at now, I can see that that's going to be an issue later on.
Oh, absolutely. And if it doesn't happen, then this, this parcel right here is going to be a big trouble for access. But we'll work with them when we get to more precise, specific details about how the layouts of the property are going to be, and whether we can get, get that access to the light between, facilitate some discussions between those two property owners.
What's the current zoning on the piece you're talking about?
R1A.
R1A?
Yeah.
So...
The land use plan is for residential office type of uses.
It says for medical building, is what the sign says. One other question, so for, this made with the applicant, so I know it says one of the uses could be small residence, but how would they, I guess, is that long-term plan, maybe have a few?
You know, again, it's there just because we're looking at a mixed use, it could be above a retail, you know, have a few apartments above retail. I mean, if you go to small towns, across, like even Oxford comes to mind, you've got a high street where you have one, a second story with just some apartments above some of those areas. Green's a little more significant.
Xenia's doing that.
We're not looking for five-story buildings here, but...
I understand, I just wanted to make sure I understood completely.
Yeah, that's, that's all we're, we just want to make sure we didn't rule that out.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor Garcia.
I have no question, thank you.
All right, and I don't, I think everything's been answered. For me, I do look forward to the site plan stage, it's going to be exciting. We always appreciate synergies, specialties, and trying to figure out best use and best design for an area, so I'm looking forward to that. All right. Any other thing for the good from council? Do I have a motion?
So move, Your Honor.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 18-...
Five.
Second, no, yeah, second and third.
I know, but I'm just getting to make sure I got, this says 06, but we did 18-1. This is 18-1, correct?
But this is an ordinance, we're moving on to the second.
Ordinance is 1806, PUD is 18-1.
All right, then there we go. I have a motion to approve 18-06, and moving it on to the second and third reading. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries, thank you. Next, public hearing is... Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Next, public hearing is PUD 18 dash two.
This is an application filed by Mitchell W. Kostler, 545 Hilltop Road, Zena, Ohio, 45385. The application requests approval to rezone approximately 2.402 acres to, from CPUD, commercial planned unit development, to CPUD, commercial planned unit development. The property is located on the west side of Esquire Drive, approximately 250 feet north of the intersection of Lake View, Lakeview Drive and Esquire Drive, further described as Book Four, Page Five, Parcel 14 on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Thank you. Is the applicant or applicant's representative present that'd like to address council? I think I see Mr. Kostler himself coming up here.
Mitch Kostler with Kostler Engineering, addresses 545 Hilltop Road, Beaver Creek Township. And we, our proposal is to build a Holiday Inn Express on the property on Esquire Drive that is the application. And when we came in and talked with staff prior to moving ahead with some plans, the building height of the existing PUD zoning was limited to 35 feet. And all these little Holiday Inns, Hampton Inn-type hotels end up around 49, 50 feet in height to make them cost-effective for development. So that's, that's what we, that was the main issue of our PUD application, but is also to bring it up, up to more current PUD regulations since the previous application was back in the nineties. And also, we just set up our, we've got a proposed layout for it, which, but that'll come in at the specific site plan's stage. But we've got trees to the west and a drainage soil to the west of the property that, that serves adjacent properties and the apartments. And there's large trees there and we're planning on leaving all those trees as they are and makes a good buffer. The building setback is proposed to be at least 75 feet and we're further than that on the, from the roadway. And we're, we're proposing over 100 feet setback from the rear of the property. So we're kind of center the property up and then the landscaping we, we went through, just got finished or getting finished with the Hampton Inn, same developer in Zena. And so that's time to start another one if, if we can make things work. That's pretty much it. All that staff got all the details and.
All right.
From there, if you've got any questions, I'll be free to answer them.
Sure. Thank you. Okay, Randy.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, the case you have before you is PUD 18 dash two. Again, it's the Holiday Inn Express rezoning. The applicant's looking to rezone about two and a half acres from an older PUD that was rezoned back in the early eighties with a B3 underlying zoning to, to a new CPUD to allow for the construction of a hotel. Again, the property is located in north, northern Beaver Creek, northwest of the intersection of Kemp Road and North Fairfield Road. Just to get a better idea, the Mall Fairfield Commons is to the north. This is the National Tire and Battery that's to the north. There's the La Rosas up here, former La Rosas, and then Shopping Center, and then Mike's Car Wash is down here. To the west is Mallard Landing Apartments. And then there's a new medical office building that was built to the east in the last couple of years. And then to the south are some single-story professional offices. Again, this property is re, is zoned as part of this larger PUD 124 dash 86. It was rezoned several years ago. And they rezoned things a little bit differently then and, and just called it a PUD and then left a B3 underlying, meaning it's basically everything in terms of the restrictions of a B3, it uses setbacks and like that. We, we knew this was part of a PUD and there may have been some flexibility, but for us to be sure, because B3 has a height limit of 35 feet, it was kind of that gray area. Is it a PUD where we can go above 35 feet? Or should we rezone it to, you know, more concretely and get rid of that, the B3 underlying, which is, we're here this evening to rezone it to a new PUD. And what we did was we took the list of B3 uses and removed some that we felt that weren't appropriate at this location. Those are allowed right now because it's a B3 underlying and there's, there's nothing specifically calling the uses out in the 124 dash 86. But with this proposed ordinance, you know, we would be removing some of those, you know, those uses that we didn't, just didn't feel were appropriate next to the residential. In terms of the land use plan, it's within the regional commercial and office area. So it's our highest intents in terms of commercial usage, like the Mall Fairfield Commons, a lot of the, a lot of the areas surrounding the mall, even some of down by the green is classified as this regional commercial and office. So it's intended for a more intense use. And in the land use plan, it specifically states that, you know, that hotels should be anticipated as, as part of these developments, as part of developments in a regional commercial, basically as a, as an ancillary accessory use to the larger retail areas. Again, we're proposing a list, a modified list of B3 uses. So we started at the B3 and we, we eliminated some that we just didn't feel were appropriate. We proposed a 50-foot building setback from the western property line. Again, that's to help buffer the proposed hotel with the, the residential properties to the west. And then a 40-foot building setback line to the Esquire Drive. Again, that's just to make sure that they don't try to put the building any closer than what the National Tire and Battery or the offices uses to the south would be. Staff and planning commission do recommend approval of the applicant's request. And I'm here to answer any questions following the public hearing.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. So is there anyone present tonight that would like to address council on this application? Anyone? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Counsel input. Let's just start on the other, from the other direction. Councilmember Littler, any comments?
I may have one soon. I'm still thinking.
Okay.
Thank you.
How about we move on to Councilmember Rushen?
That's fine.
Do we have an idea what the occupancy of the hotel could hold? Or how many rooms? Or, or it may not be along that step by now, but.
Really, with the, the site, the size of it is, it's going to be based on how many parking spaces they got in. They showed, they gave me this proposed initial sketch-up which showed 109 rooms, I believe, or 100, a little less than 100 rooms. You know, this is something that they just.
90, 90 rooms.
Okay. 90, yeah, 90 rooms. So, but again, this was just a really early rendition, just because we asked, can you make it work? And so they wanted to show us at least that there's a possibility of making it work. We haven't, I haven't given them any comments based on initial reaction to this, but that's about the size. I mean, it says they're 90, so really it's going to be limited to how many parking spaces they can fit in.
Councilmember Van.
How, how tall are the Mallard Landing? What's, what's the difference in height between the residential and this hotel?
The Mallard Landing are three-story buildings.
So that, is that the 35 feet?
I would say it's 35, but then it's also got a pitch roof. So, I mean, you're, you're going to go above that, I mean, 40 feet maybe.
And so if this is going to be 49 or 50 feet, it's not going to be that much different?
It wouldn't be like some huge.
Be five or eight or whatever, but it's not going to be 20 feet or something.
Right. Yeah, they're really limited on the number of parking spaces. So, I mean, it would be, it's not going to be a huge tower that would eclipse them. And we also required that setback so that it's not up against that property line as well.
That's my only question. Thanks.
Did you?
I'm good.
Thank Councilmember?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Councilmember Upton.
The recent hotels that we've had come up around the mall, Fairfield Mall, on the loop there.
Right.
They're, they're both four and five stories tall, aren't they?
Right. 60, I think there was one, there was a portion of it that was up in the seventies.
Okay. Um, you know, my concern with these taller buildings is, is really with our fire department and their ability to reach those upper floors and, you know, in an emergency. I know they had to make special arrangements when the hospital was built because that is the tallest building in, in Beaver Creek.
You know, we forward these plans all to, not the rezoning, but we forward site plans. And, you know, I know they have 100 foot ladder.
Right.
And they weren't any concerned with the hotels, the, to the north. And those will be, you know, those are six-story hotels, so.
Could I just ask the staff to just confirm with the township that they're, or the fire department, that they're okay with the, another building of this, this height?
Yeah, I can, I could send.
That would be my only real concern is, you know, now we're adding more buildings and what if there's that off chance that there's two emergencies of tall buildings? And, you know, at some point, we're going to have, we're going to keep adding taller buildings. Do they have the resources to keep supporting that?
Sure.
That's all I would have.
They also have mutual aid contracts or mutual aid. So that would, even though it's a little further, but Fairborn's close.
And the base two.
Councilmember Curran.
I'll pick your honor.
All right. Vice Mayor Garcia.
You answer all my questions. Thank you.
The bottom line is that we're, they're going through this new process mainly just for the height. Even under the old PUD, they could have done something just as dense, correct?
Right. That would have, if they could make it work.
Right.
From a room, from a design standpoint.
Right. I understand that. But it's so, that's their only real big change versus what could have gone in there without a new zoning process.
Right.
Okay. All right. I have nothing else. Anything, last word?
I would move for approval of ordinance 18 dash oh seven and move it to the second and third readings.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 18 dash oh seven, moving it on to the second and third reading. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next, ordinances, resolutions, and PUDs. Ordinance 18 dash zero five.
This is the second reading of an ordinance to appropriate for public use, all right title and interest in a certain parcel of property located at 3870 Southview Street, Beaver Creek, Ohio, for the purpose to acquire a simple, free, pretty simple interest for an off-street parking facility in the city of Beaver Creek, Ohio.
Thank you. This is the second reading of this ordinance. So at that point, it is a public hearing. Is there anyone present tonight that would like to address council on this application, this ordinance? Sign down. This will naturally move right on to the third reading at our next regular scheduled council meeting. Next item, ordinance 18 dash zero eight.
This is the first, this is the first reading of an ordinance repealing current section 94.07 unsolicited printed materials of the city of Beaver Creek, Ohio, code of ordinances and adopting new section 94.07 unsolicited printed materials of the city Beaver Creek code of ordinances.
All right. Thank you. Does staff have any presentation at all that they'd like to do on this? Mr. McHugh?
Yes. Mayor and council, this is one that was brought up before council at the last, last work session. It does establish a, the, the point of this is to establish a civil action for citizens to, who feel that they're not having any success with these handouts or throwouts or whatever you want to call them, the unsolicited printed materials. A lot of times it adds circulars. That's what they generally take the form of. And this ordinance, I think, the changes are pretty straightforward. So unless, I can certainly address more if there's more questions.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any comments from council? Any discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. McHugh, I just have a quick question. Under section B2, the last line is removed, "In no event shall delivery continue after 30 days of receipt of this request." I didn't know, is there a reason we're removing the 30 days as a kind of, I know we say in a reasonable time, but is there a reason we're getting rid of the 30-day requirement?
Basically because the whole premise before was that the city would take action and how this is for the citizen and when the citizen acts and what the citizen does, be it 30 days or 15 days or 45 days. Yeah, we really, yeah, there's no, there's no requirement for the citizen to go quicker, shorter, or longer. So that was kind of the intent here.
Okay. I think I'm, I'm reading it differently. So can you just correct me? The way I'm reading it is that the publisher should stop, so once the citizen reaches out, then the publisher would have to stop disseminating the materials in a reasonable amount of time, but in no time, it, it used to say they should stop disseminating the materials after 30 days that the citizen gives them notice. Am I reading that wrong? Is that right?
Correct. Correct. Yes.
Okay. So I'm just, I know, I just, I didn't know if, I, I thought it, I found it a little beneficial to have it in there since we're putting the, we're making this for the citizens now, that, you know, they would have to go after this. And by giving some stated days, even if it's 60 or 90 days, it kind of puts a little bit of pressure to on those disseminating materials that they have to do.
Yeah, certainly, certainly. There's no harm in it back, but I guess I was just looking at for a more general perspective of, but certainly if you add it back in there, it will, you know, simply say, you know, continue with 30 days after receipt of the, of the request. I mean, ultimately, the city will have no, we have no control on when the receipt is received, when it's signed, when they send it. But certainly, if that's, you know, the citizen can then take that and argue, I mean, it's, you know, as you know, there's going to be evidence and proof and burden of proof to show that it was stopped, it wasn't stopped in 30 days. And ultimately, the, the courts can have to deal with that issue. So, but certainly.
The only reason I'm in favor for keeping, maybe not 30 days, but even 60 or 90, is because if you read it in conjunction with section C about the legal action, saying, you know, if a publisher fails to do it upon a reasonable time after receipt, I don't want to get too wondrous on the citizens that reasonable can be, well, what's reasonable? I mean, is it a year after? How many people are they disseminating this to? I just wanted to bring it up for discussion. That was, just when I read it in conjunction, it made me kind of pause.
Yeah. I, I would say if we add the 30 days back in, my advice would be is that on section two, if we had 30 days receiver, that we probably, then I will change section C to put 30 days in there too. So, so the two coincide.
Yeah. And I'm not said at 30, it could be 60, it could be nine, it could be a little longer.
Yeah, I mean, I guess.
I think that would be, have just a little bit benefit, a little bit more beneficial to the citizen if they want to bring this kind of action.
Clear. Little guide, I guess guidance from council, whether you, you know, 30, 60, because at the second, or at the next reading, I'll revise this.
Yeah, I think.
No, this isn't.
Either one, but 60 days is a, should be plenty of time to do anything.
I think 60 is more than enough, yeah.
60.
All right.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you. No problem.
So, so basically, this is, we had complaints from citizens about people throwing things into their driveway and it became litter because they didn't ask for it. And so several years ago, the city passed an ordinance saying it was illegal. But we don't have the manpower or the, the lawyers to take that company to, so it's not something that we're enforcing. So we're changing this to take the city out of the loop, but also to leave in place some rules so that if the citizen wants to complain to either the phone book delivery or the ad deliverer that's thrown in the, in the driveway, that they have, well, the city said, here, you have, you have to respond within, now it's going to be 60 days if we change it, which I think is really good to put a rule in there. But other than that, our, our, we are not going to use tax dollars to, to stop it to happen. It's between the individual household and the whoever's doing it. So that's, that's what we've decided would be the best practice since the other one was beyond what we could really do. I just wanted to clarify that for the citizens.
Okay. I'm going to back up just a hair. This is an ordinance, so by past practices, we've allowed the public to make comment. Is there anyone here tonight that wants to comment on this ordinance? Please limit your time to three minutes and you'll also have the opportunity at the next reading to do the same thing. So thank you.
You may see me at the next meeting.
Okay. Please give us a name and address.
My name is Frank Fichek and I live at 4308 Kemp Road. I'm a citizen. The following story is hypothetical, but it could be real. Today I walked in in my driveway and picked up a unwanted, an unasked-for material which was thrown there this morning. On the way to this meeting, I tossed it into the parking lot of the police station and I was arrested for littering. The identical material was tossed. This morning it was advertisement, this evening it is litter. Please explain to me the following, how someone can come to the city officers and get permission to violate an anti-littering ordinance and thus throw their stuff all over the city, our fair city. And I am branded a criminal for doing the identical act. The solution is not granting permission to every citizen to file a lawsuit or any other high-minded organization. Frankly, no pun intended, and with all due respect, I think this solution is. with all due respect, I think this solution is at a minimum demonstrating a bias from our legal system, our counseling, and possibly at worst, a conflict of interest. The solution is an opt-in clause for our ordinances, that is, everybody assumed to not want this trash tossed in their driveway unless they actively demonstrate otherwise. This way, everybody wins. The advertiser can provide his or her clients with precise numbers of how many folks actually read their product. Our citizens who expect our environment to be protected by their elected officials are protected and our fair city remains clean, open space, we love so much that we moved here in the first place. Again, the solution is an opt-in clause for such material, not permission to enter into an expensive litigation by every citizen to help clean our fair city clean. In my digital world, I have and depend upon software to protect me from spam. In my audio world, I have and depend upon caller ID to protect me from unwanted robocalls. In my physical world, literally speaking, again, no pun intended, I depend upon you. So, and I guess as a taxpayer, I pay you guys a big bucks to solve these problems.
I wish.
Whether we're short of staff or not, to have a legislative ordinance on the docket that says littering is illegal, enforce the damn thing. It could be enforced on me. It is not my job to let it enter into expensive litigation to keep our city clean driveway by driveway by driveway. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. Anyone else? All right, any, any discussion?
So, Mr. McHugh, evidently, it is the state that allows these merchants to, and our home rule doesn't allow us to stop this. Can you repeat that?
Well, in many, in many cases, you know, what I, what I've observed and, 'cause I get these myself, they'll, they, at times will put a little bit of news in it.
Not so much anymore.
Yeah.
It's tough.
Some, some will, but it, really, it's only, it takes very little.
It used to be they were those kinda things, but now they're just a packet of advertisements.
But, you know, they will, they will say that's their first amendment right to do that, and the ones where they've been challenged, 'cause I've written some case on this, they will, they will add an, a news article. It doesn't have to be much, it could be a very short little news article. Then it becomes a newspaper and they will go after first. I mean, there are some examples where cities have created a, a do not throw list, you know, where a citizen comes in, has to fill out an application, there's probably a sticker that goes with it, there's a fee that goes with it, the city manages the program, and that's, but, you know, if that's something council's interested in, but I think the way this is set up at this point, I have, you know, we have a lot of evidence issues to try to prove, prove who did it, how it got there, you know, so, you know, we're being put in a position of, of trying to, you know, basically handle a matter for citizens. And I do wanna say is that, you know, there's a difference between, you know, they will, as I say, as a publisher, maintain their constitutional rights, it's different if, if I as a citizen go grab a couple of them out of my yard and then go, you know, dump them at the city building. I don't have the same constitutional right in that particular case, so, I mean.
Well, but, to go along with what Mr. Fichek said, I mean, it is true, I mean, it, it's a, to, for a citizen to go, I mean, it costs money to file.
It, it does.
It's money, it's time, which is why we don't want to partake in that, but at the same time, you know, a lot of our citizens are on limited incomes, especially some of our older residents. I mean, and it, it's costly, I mean, to file.
And, and certainly if.
And it takes time and, you know, it doesn't, it wears you down.
Yeah, certainly, I mean, if council wants us to go litigate the issue, I'm more than happy to litigate it. I just want, you know, as I stated at the work session, I just want everyone in council to understand that, you know, that cost, is that where council, you know, and where we feel it should be, is that the best way to address this question? And I'm not so sure it is.
And in the end, it may be that it's upheld that they have the constitutional right to do so.
Oh, yeah. Well, there's no doubt that they'll have that. I'm just saying that, I mean, I know we're trying to make it better, but at the same time, it's, it's, most of our citizens aren't gonna be able to, to do that. And it takes time, and some of them would need assistance in even filing that.
Yeah.
So, now, I mean, and legal, legal teams aren't cheap.
I, I would.
We need our independents.
Yeah, I would, I would think probably in many cases, if this is filed as a small claims, that probably will get the, you know, I mean, in my experience where I've had to have these twice, last time this came up, I was able to work with the council for the Dayton Daily News Cox and get that one stopped, but again, there was considerable, you know, working through that, which I understand most citizens aren't gonna have that access. I, I appreciate that.
And my only point, is, you know, this, in my opinion, is an unfortunate truth. I don't think any member of council or staff would, you know, support, you know, or enjoys having, you know, various vendors pass around, you know, sent materials. And it's an unfortunate reality, you know, that the city faces, that we're, I think Mr. McHugh wants to be, you know, upfront by the potential cost if we were to keep the law as it is and actually proactively go after those who do and violate, you know, this current ordinance, it would put a financial burden on the city and the taxpayers that, and quite frankly, weren't able to support. And I think that, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. McHugh, but this is the standard practice of surrounding communities, that there's not many communities in your research that has ordinance on the books like this, and by changing it, it puts us in line with surrounding communities and how they go with that. And quite frankly, if we're not going to force an ordinance, there's, there's really no reason to have it on the books in the first place. So, I think it's an unfortunate reality, but it's a reality that we have to face in terms of deciding, you know, if we wanna change the language or not.
No, I would agree with you that we've not had, I know, no other jurisdictions that have had legal actions of this nature.
Anything else? All right, this is just the first reading. This goes on to the second and third reading. Do I have a motion to do such?
I do.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to send ordinance eighteen dash zero eight on to the second and third readings, and of course, that's second.
With amendment.
It's gonna be the sixty days.
With the sixty days.
With the amendment.
Change that for the second reading.
Oh, I will, but I.
But, but he's gonna notify it right now, so it's upfront.
Yeah, fine, with amendment.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries and we will see you all on the second reading for the next public hearing.
Steve McHugh, I am curious if we could be nice to our residents and have a form letter that would, they could say, it would help them communicate with whoever's throwing that in their driveway, and it would say, they could fill in the blank, but you could draft.
Yeah, we could, we could certainly draft a standard, so, you know, fill in the, who are you gonna send, you know, 'cause it may be different, so.
See some of this tape.
Yeah, fill in and please say that I do not.
I think that would be a nice, a nice thing if we could have just a fill in the blank so that if they have that problem, wanna complain, they could use that form and.
Well, and then actually.
And then it would correlate with the, or correlate with the.
With the new ordinance that references it.
Right, right.
And just state that if not, they would.
Right. I would like that.
They would intend to pursue, you know, they could pursue action under this ordinance.
Yep. Good idea. Okay. Next item on the agenda is liquor permits. Chief. Do you need to read that?
I have a request for a new liquor permit for BR Beaver Creek LLC, doing business as Blackrock Bar and Grill. We received notification from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control, reference a new D five I liquor permit for BR Beaver Creek LLC, doing business as Blackrock Bar and Grill, twenty-seven forty-five Fairfield Commons. The records checked required by the Ohio Department of Commerce, Division of Liquor Control, were conducted on the business officers, shareholders for this application request. Staff is recommending the application request move forward with no comment.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, a motion to accept without comment.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, signal others, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries, thank you. Next item, city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and the council. Start out with the resurfacing, which is coming up, the anticipated work of this, and we'll do a press release right before it happens, but we're looking at the scheduling of the contractor who won the, who won the bid this year, and it's looking like the first part of June that they'll start the repaving. So, part one of this year's resurfacing program will consist of the base program, ten point seven seven miles. And of course, the list, we've already did a press release, but under the beaver creek ohio.gov, you'll see a, a engineering department, and under the engineering, you'll see resurfacing program, and you can get to the, the base plan and alternatives. Now, unfortunately, I will, last year was what, sixteen point some miles we did in total, base plus alternatives. This year, if everybody's noticed, our gas prices have went up, that means oils went up. And oil is one of the main ingredients in blacktop, besides gravel and everything. But with that, it's a, it will be less miles this year than last year just because of that one, one thing, the price. So, but we'll do our best to stretch the dollars on the miles. So, next, so that'd be June, we'll look for more information soon. Next this weekend, Friday, April twenty-seventh, six PM, Dominic Laffino Park, this is Celebrate Arbor Day. We just had a little bit of proclamation here, but Celebrate Arbor Day is by helping to plant a tree, enjoy Storytime Craft with Green County Library, and the first fifty families receive a goodie bag, including a tree to plant at home. So, that's awesome. So, a, a lot of people have been questioning and different things, they've been seeing trees throughout the city being taken down. I think Gersh Parker parked some people, we had some, were saying something, and we heard about, of course, at the golf course, which we had underplanted some trees year, years, a few years back. These are all ash trees that we're having to take down. So, unfortunate, you know, they're diseased and some of them are very dead or will soon be dead. So, unfortunate, but with the Tree Advisory Board and activities like this will make us more aware what the correct types of trees to plant and where, and, and really do trees that will last hundreds of years hopefully, and not be, prevent disease and things like that. So, very good to see. So, please, this Friday, six PM. Also, just make a reminder, Beaver Creek Police Department will be doing the drugs drop-off, prescription drugs drop-off and disposal, that is Saturday, this Saturday, the twenty-eighth, from ten to two PM. Also, I wanted to remind everybody that the, they also collect the flags. They collect the flags and properly dispose of the old flags. So, if you have an old flag that's needing proper disposal, we actually do that. So, again, these events will be posted on our website and Facebook page. And lastly, just a reminder, put it on your calendars, mark your calendars, 'cause it comes up quicker, 'cause we only have one meeting besides a work session that this happens. So, mark your calendars for open house on Saturday, May nineteenth, Saturday, May nineteenth, from eleven to two. During this year's open house, the city hall will also be open for visitors to tour. So, we'll have some council members and mayor and whoever else can attend to be here, answer questions, go try to talk to the mayor, maybe, or even council members, vice mayor, with pictures with the mayor, you know, mayor for today, they love the gavel. Boy Scouts always get, come in and they, they love taking the picture and, and using the gavel. They have a ball, it's, even some of the older kids really like doing that. So, this year's, and it will include the police and fire vehicles and displays, the K-9, the taser demonstrations. I'm not falling for that, chief, so don't even ask, I'm not doing the taser demonstration. Care Flight, children's activities, McGruff, along with additional activities taking place throughout city hall as well. With the park, park and recreation department, we're going to be having some events in here that people have a reason to come in besides maybe, you know, getting their picture taken. So, police department staff, city hall staff and city council members will be on hand to meet and greet and answer questions. So, again, May nineteenth, that's a Saturday, eleven to two, at the police station and city hall. We just wanna open our facilities and, and the kids will have some fun and snacks, and there'll be food, of course, involved, which that always gets people in the door. All right, just a couple more things this Saturday. I did attend the summer kickoff and kite fly at Dominic Laffino Park, that was a great, it was well attended, is around a hundred and fifty to a hundred and seventy-five children, plus the adults. And I wanted to, it was very well attended, I wanted to thank all the partners who made, helped make that happen. A lot of free food given out, free kites, free activities, a lot of information, and I was out there and I posted some pictures to Facebook, so a good time for all. And the weather cooperated. It was actually a little windy, the help the kites, and it wasn't raining, so we were very pleased. Also, wanted to thank, I received, and mayor did as well, thank yous, a letter and a nice card completed by the children from Shaw Elementary. Mayor and myself went, what was it, about a month ago, went and judged the science fair project. And so, they made us some thank you cards and we really appreciate it, and they signed it, all the signatures. That means a lot to us, and I know I'm, I was honored and mayor was honored to help them in that event. That was very special to me. I, I learned a few things.
They don't, they don't realize how much we appreciate doing it.
Right.
We really enjoy it as well, so.
And last thing I had, which I'm not gonna steal too much of a thunder, from Vice Mayor Garcia, went to the DC Fly-In this past week with Vice Mayor Garcia. We had, lots of connections were made, lots of information. I plan on distributing, I still have some paperwork to scan into, some handouts and things I wanna scan the council, and I received some electronic files as well that I made into a PDF, so I'll have some information coming your way to share the information. But, you know, I got to tell, and Joanna probably was very, very tired of hearing me repeat, you know, again, if we're standing next to each other sometimes and the same, different people would come up and I'd tell the same story over and over, but about the good things, our needs, the developments needed, of course, our support of the right path, the contractors, everything that we do in Beaver Creek, and I think it was well received. And so, there's many of others, and like I said, I'll get some more information to you guys so you can see that. And I, again, don't want to take Vice Mayor Garcia's, she may have some things to say tonight or in the future. The hardest thing we had is, which I shared, was getting out of Dayton on Monday due to some mechanical problems at the airport, but we were just blessed to have arrived safely there and back, and we'll counter blessings and won't complain about a five-hour layover. But, but all in all, a very educational for me, myself, that being my first time there, but got to meet a lot of people that, like, had heard the names or they had heard about, I was new and, and different things, but it was, it was well worth the investment, and hopefully it definitely will pay off in, in the long run. So, that's all I have.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
I have very little this evening to share, other than I do want to bring to the, everybody's attention, the Memphis Bell ceremonies are gonna be out at the Air Force Museum coming up in May. It's May seventeenth through the nineteenth. I was at one of their planning meetings a couple weeks ago, and it is going to be one terrific event. They've got some things going on out there, out at the. They've got some things going on out there, out at the museum area, they're just going to be fantastic. One that really grabbed my attention is there's a, there's a group of reenactors from up northern Ohio that reenact the D-Day invasion, and they're going to be out at the museum on Saturday, and they're going to actually do at least one, if not more, reenactments. So, it is, I suggest everybody go to the website, it's at nationalmuseum.af.mil, and you can get all the information on that, and it's, there's going to be a huge influx of people into the community, so we need to prepare for that as well. You can pass those on down there. And with that, I think I've talked long enough. How about Councilmember Van? You got anything?
I wanted to share with the public that next Thursday, next Monday, April 30th, there will be a symposium that talks about marijuana and its impact in the community. I have personally been working with the Green County Health Department and the Mental Health and Recovery Board for Green Clark and Madison County to put together a super educational workshop. You know, when the opioid epidemic hit the region, it kind of surprised people, we weren't really prepared, but by having open discussions with professionals coming in and talking about different things, it'll, it gives us a head start to think about what the impacts might be, and if there's things that we should do to prepare. So, I think it'll be a very informational session, and I would invite people to attend and learn more about medical marijuana. Something the state of Ohio, it wasn't the voters, the voters voted it down, but then the state decided to give us medical marijuana. And there's pros and cons, and it'll just give us some ideas of what we need to do to get prepared, both in many ways. Thank you.
Councilmember Rushing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since last council meeting, I believe Mayor Stone, Councilmember Curran, City Manager Landrum, and I attended the all Beaver Creek Band Concert at the Nutter Center. That was quite an experience to see all the bands from the Beaver Creek Schools play independently as their individual bands, but also as an ensemble, because some very talented students in our district. It's going to be a busy week. Tomorrow, the Beaver Creek Historical Society is hosting the Birth of the City of Beaver Creek, which will be a lecture of source talking about the history of Beaver Creek. I look forward to attending and to learn about the founding of how we became a city. On Thursday is the Beaver Creek Volunteer Recognition Ceremony to recognize all of our great volunteers who put countless of hours dedicated to Beaver Creek, making us a better community. And then, as already mentioned, this coming Friday, we have the Arbor Day Celebration. I look forward to attend with our new Tree Advisory Committee, and look forward to a busy week ahead, so, and to report.
Thank you. Councilmember Little.
I don't have anything, I think you've all covered everything, so we're good to go.
All right. Councilmember Curran.
Councilmember Ryan over there, I think he covered out a quick here.
Councilmember Epton.
No comments, fine.
Vice Mayor Garcia.
Oh, good, everybody saved their time for me. So, I do want to give just a, I'm not going to say brief, but I do have a report from the DDC Fly-In. The one thing I'm going to say is Jeff McGrath got a lot of high praise from people that I met there, so I felt special that I knew you, because everyone talks so highly of you. But, the one thing that struck me very much about the DDC Fly-In was that there were so many businesses there. Kettering Health Network came out in a huge force, Soren was there in a huge force. What I thought was very important for us is that everyone kept coming up to me saying, "It's so great to see Beaver Creek represented as a city." And I think what was nice was that we got to make these connections with these business owners and developers in the city that already clearly have a great relationship with our city staff, but also now have a good relationship with Pete and myself, and I think the five to nine hour flyover that we had at Dayton Airport just made everyone bond a little closer. Midair flight, having to turn back around's never fun for anybody. But when we finally got there, on Tuesday, we were packed with meetings, the three speakers we had, I thought were all very important. The first one's name was Lucian Niemeyer. He's the Assistant Secretary of Defense for Energy, Installations, and Environment, and in his position, he provides budgetary policy and management oversight for the DOD's real property, which is important because he would be in charge of BRAC. So, he was a former Air Force Civil Engineer. He actually spent time at Wright-Patt, and he bragged about, what was it, the Oregon District that he'd stumble home from? So, he's very familiar with our area and Wright-Patt, which I thought was extremely important. We also heard from Barry Jackson, who was a senior advisor to President George W. Bush, and he was also the former chief of staff to local Congressman John Boehner when he was the speaker. So, he gave us a little insight about how the staffers work together and how the legislation happens, especially for our, for our area. And then last was Lauren Thompson. He's the Chief Executive Officer of Source Associates, and it's a consulting company for defense and aerospace companies, and he also talked about the importance of Wright-Patt and how the current legislation in place looks very bright for Wright-Patt's future. Now, a number of things could change, but as it's written now, there's a lot of good things, especially with modernization of weapons through research and development. There's a lot of things that could come to Wright-Patt, so having these relationships with the business developers, especially people who are in aerospace or who are in trade associations, is very important if we're going to grow and develop businesses around the area for Wright-Patt. So, I thought that was important. Pete and I split the day. Pete went to a seminar about local government policies, and I attended one on opioids. It was really enlightening to see Senator Brown and Senator Portman, different sides of political spectrums, working together so closely for funding for the area. They presented some opportunities that may or may not apply for us directly, but that funding applies for our area as a whole in the Miami Valley, what's available, what we can apply for, what the region can apply for, and it was really important to hear what's coming down the pipeline as far as in the next couple of months, it's going to be released for funding. So, I have a pipeline in now with Senator Portman, staff attorney, to see what the funding is and when it becomes available, and to see how it can benefit, if it can benefit Beaver Creek, as opposed to just Miami Valley as a whole. We had a reception that evening with the congressmen and our representatives, and then on Wednesday morning, we had a few hours of interesting discussion with Congressman Turner, Congressman Davidson, Senator Brown, Congressman Jim Jordan, and Senator Portman, and every single one of them said the same thing about how important the DDC is, not just to our community, but also to them. They said a lot of the legislative strides that they make throughout the year come directly from the individuals that come to the DDC. They thought it was extremely important that we were actually there because a lot gets done in that room. When you have so many businesses and developers and presidents of associations and local government officials together in one room, we were allowed to do a lot of networking. But again, everybody said the same thing, how important it was to have Beaver Creek there, to have a presence, and it was, it was a really good trip. I think Pete and I walked away with a lot of good information to bring back, stuff that we want to implement throughout the next couple of months, and it was great to meet more of Fairborn City Council and their city manager as well, so, looking forward to developing those relationships. And Jeff McGrath got great shout-outs, so I don't think it could have gone any better for us.
Be careful now, don't, nobody else say anything about you.
You won't be able to walk out the door.
Yeah, I know. All right. Anything else from council? We'll move on then. Citizen comments. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to address council on any issue at all? Something on your mind? Welcome to come up and let us know. I see somebody thinking about it.
Not yet.
Okay. Well, seeing none, we will move on. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned. Thank you very much.